This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Good morning. This is the August 28th, um, city council ordinance meeting. Um, we are here this morning at 8:00 AM to discuss the edits to the short-term rental ordinance. I am going to, uh, share my screen. So there's, there are folks here who I will ask to introduce themselves. Um, just so everyone knows who's present from the city. Um, so again, Connie Denham, Chair of the Ordinance Committee.
Cameron Smith, uh, I'm on the ordinance subcommittee, but I'm also the note taker.
Great.
Ryan Griffin, I'm the Health Department Director.
Great. And Allison, would you like to introduce yourself?
Hi Allison, I'm the Planning Director.
That should sound great. Um, okay, so. Why is it not showing up? So hang on just one second. Um, I'm not sure why.
I can share my screen too Connie, if you want.
You want to share your screen? That would be great. So let me make you a, because I had it pulled up here, but it's showing all my screens.
Okay.
And can you just remove the comments there Allison? Is that possible? There we go. So hopefully, Chris, can you see that okay on your screen? I just want to make sure you can see that.
Yeah, I can, yes, I can see it.
Okay, great. I just want to make sure everyone can see it who wants to see it. So at the last meeting, um, I apologize. I understand that there was some sound difficulties. Uh, so mainly what we had discussed at that meeting was, um.
I have the notes right here.
Okay. Would you like to share a little bit about what the main topics were of that?
Yes, I would. Um, first we were talking about with short-term rental, um, how often would we inspect it? Who would inspect it? And would the inspection itself have to be perfect in order for a short-term rental to be approved? And so Allison said, no, you could have a 30-day time period to be able to take care of problems. And then Ryan said that the first follow-up inspection would be free and then subsequent ones would cost more. So then we were just talking a lot about, okay, um, how often, you know, we were just talking about the logic behind whether or not we would have one inspection per year or others and who would do it. Uh, we talked about how other communities had it. We were looking at, um, how the process would actually start and would we actually, as we're going to formalize this, we were talking about how many people actually had rentals and we had that we were going to, um, do we think we would actually reach 50, 50, um, properties? Because right now we already have 40 that have been operating. So we were talking a lot about that. And then we were talking about whether or not nuisance complaints would be a part of how we would deal with that. And let's see, just talking again about, um, there were some questions about the sprinkler system. And, um, if you have more than 50% of the days of the year, you would have to install a sprinkler system. If it's less than 50, um, the health, the health department or the fire department, uh, building inspector would be open for other ways to suppress fire. Um, and then we just decided that we were talking about how much the cap would be because we've raised it to 250 days. Um, that would be, what would be the maximum number of days? And then we were also talking about, uh, limits for five years, uh, I mean, for five people. And so the question was, if you have a sprinkler system, are you able to have more than five people? And yes, that was what was causing the five-person limit for the short-term rentals. And so then, um, we ended the discussion there and moved down to sewage flood and made an appointment today to discuss it.
Right. Um, great. Any questions about that?
Right.
No, okay. Um, so I just wanted to cover that. I wanted to acknowledge that before we kind of move forward because it was unclear. But at the same time, um, now that we kind of have that information, is there anybody here who has anything that they would like to say for public speak? And, and this is your opportunity to chime in.
We just know there's people that can't find the link, so.
Okay.
I have something.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I think you, the committee for working on the ordinance, and I think I would just like to hopefully remind everyone as it feels like this is getting more and more restrictive as we go along, that the police have sat in this room and basically said, there's not a problem with short-term rentals with calls, except for one. It's no longer good. And the fire department has said they don't get any fire calls. In fact, when you talk to them about the whole city, they're really bummed that they don't get any fire calls because they just do ambulance runs for the most part. And that it's been said that there are complaints, but no one's given any evidence of that, except for one person's word on that. And, um, I just want to reiterate that you're affecting at least 40 people's lives and all of their guests, and I believe potentially all the restaurants and bars and other tattoo places and weed places in the area. And by getting more and more restrictive, I think, I don't actually personally believe that we're going to get that many more long-term rentals back. Um, so that's my take on it. So I'd like to see if I had my way to be a little bit just overall less restrictive. We're spending a lot of time on what's going to happen when hosts get in trouble. And there's no really evidence of that as far as anyone's presented to us yet.
Great, thank you. I just want to ask a clarifying question. Can you, what has, has gotten more restrictive?
Well, I think it's, we're talking about more oversight and in here there's like, uh, all the neighbors are going to get notified when people have short-term rentals now, when I, I have an appeal in. And when the postcard went out, the way that it read looked like someone called the police on us. So I went and talked to all of my neighbors and they were not even aware I had a short-term rental. And one of my neighbors who's right next door said, I had no idea that you even own the house. It's been so quiet there. And the neighbors we had before were very loud and yelled at each other all the time. So it just feels like we're spending a lot of time talking about what's going to happen when people get in trouble.
Um, I don't think we added anything, did we, about notifying?
We didn't. We talked about it last meeting, but I don't think, I don't think we added anything.
Yeah, so that's.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. I know that was a question about the process. Um, but it wasn't anything that we had put into here. Um, I think it was only a matter if there had been complaints, that we had said that if there were complaints, then when the licensing or the the approval came up, um, and I'm saying that because I don't want to mix licensing board.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, uh, that, that, uh, if there was a recurring issue, then when the Board of Health went to do their review, they might reach out to neighbors to notify them of like, hey, this has been a recurring thing.
A recurring thing at the Health Department?
No, recurring issue for this particular house or this particular.
The city or with the neighbors?
Uh.
With the city.
Yeah, with the city. Yeah. So this has been a, and that might've been because of noise or that might've been because of whatever. And then at that point, the Board of Health might reach out to that, to, uh, neighbors and say, this particular short-term rental is coming up for its approval. There's going to be a public hearing for that, you know, et cetera. But, um, that would put a great deal of strain on the Board of Health. Uh, if we were to do that for all 40 or, you know, however, up to 50 at this point. Um, and, uh, hearing from our Director of the Health Department, uh, you know, that would be, uh, an excessive, I don't use the word excessive.
Yeah.
It would be a lot of work for you, um, to have to do that. And so if they could just kind of collect all of the approvals from the various departments, uh, that signed off or approved about, then they could just very easily say, okay, this is approved, 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 approved. Oh, this one has five complaints, whatever. We're going to take a little bit more time to actually review this, this particular house. But it's nothing in here that, that, um, we put in here that would demand that every single short-term rental had to go through that review process. It's really to be able to say about one, hopefully, one person that might do that. But, um, Counselor Smith, do you have a comment?
Yeah. For clarification, I want to make sure if I'm understanding you right, concerned that anyone who has a short-term rental, let's suppose the person next door to me had a short-term rental. And I didn't, I thought, oh, not, not in my backyard. And I, I got all the people around me to also say, we don't want that. And then they come here and they all say, we don't want that. If there's no record of the complaint getting to the point of having a call to the police and the police verifying that this is really a noise nuisance or, for example, there's trash piling up outside, like, that would have to be verified through our departments rather than have this kind of, we don't want this in our yard kind of thing. Like, I don't think we're at that point where that would have any sway. Uh, I know, I know we're not at the point where just because people didn't want to have short-term rentals in East Hampton, that they would have the power to be able to say, no, you can't operate anymore simply because we don't like it. So I just want to make sure that that's what I'm hearing from you, that you're concerned that that could happen.
Well, I am concerned. I had my own personal way back when with the city didn't want something, notified all the neighbors and I mean, that's fine. That was the process and that's under the water, under the bridge. But yeah, I just want to make sure that everyone's not being set up to fail from the beginning. And that's kind of how you're feeling right now.
Yeah. So if I could speak to that, just really, I normally don't respond to public speak, but I ask for that.
Do you have one second?
Okay. Yeah, I have. Um, but. Okay. I, I think that's why we're trying to work with the Board of Health. Initially, we were trying to work with the licensing board so that it wasn't just one department or one particular issue, but we actually had some sort of public process by which we could actually have people who are outside of this say, actually, there's not enough information here for us to, to limit this or to say that this person, and by person, I mean.
Yeah.
Host. Host, um, owner of the short-term rental, uh, is, is doing anything that's not accurate, right? This is something that the city is saying we're making space for. Uh, this is something that we are saying there is a, a need for this, right? As we've talked before, there's no hotel services, uh, within East Hampton. And so, um, you know, I think we're trying to, to accommodate, right? Uh, the need as well as the people who want to provide that particular service. And so, you know, we want to make sure that by working with the Board of Health and, and, and working with the Health Department, right, who are ready, um, goes through this process of looking at housing and things like that, if there's issues and concerns, so that there is a neutral body that can say, hmm, you know, this, this is, this adds up or actually this isn't adding up, right? So people need to, to provide that. Um, um, I don't want to use the word proof, but you know.
Well, I mean, it's nice if someone makes a con- accusation or comment or says there's a complaint. It's nice, would be nice to see evidence.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, absolutely. And I think that's why we're working with the Board of Health to, to have to do that. Um, I think people had expressed some concern about, um, uh, there not being a public process, right? And so, um, that, you know, the, the Board of Health can work with the Fire Department. It can work with the, uh, you know, the building, uh, inspector building department, um, to, to be able to kind of address any of those um, concerns that they might have as a, as, um, meeting code and things like that, but also that, um, that again, neutral body to be able to make sure that the needs of the community are met, but also with this ordinance, the needs, rights of the hosts are also being kind of met.
Thank you.
Yeah. So we've tried not to, we've tried not to be restrictive. So I think we've tried to, to do that.
Can I say one more thing?
Absolutely.
In this particular committee with ordinance, because this is trying to fix all the loopholes, I think ordinance can come across as sounding a lot more restrictive because we're trying to think of worst-case scenarios and to see whether or not what, what would happen in this case. And I'm just bringing that up because I can appreciate how it sounds like we're trying to get worse and worse and worse. But I think from a responsible, um, ordinance creating standpoint, to not think of all those different possibilities and what would happen then, I think would not be doing our due diligence to be putting something down in writing. But in order to get to that point, be able to say, oh, we did, we did think about all of this. And yeah, so for example, yeah, noise complaints that are informal, that have never reached the city level, we can't really deal with that here. I, I think that's why we're being exhaustive with these extreme examples, just to make sure that we're not unnecessarily restricting people and that we do have appropriate measures in place. But I just want to acknowledge that that would be overwhelming to hear every time you come in and we're coming up with these ridiculous scenarios that you're like, this would never happen. I agree, but I think from writing it down as a, you know, from, from a lawmaking standpoint and ordinance standpoint, I feel like it's our responsibility to make sure that we're not leaving someone vulnerable because we haven't talked all of that through. So I just wanted to give you my perspective on that and why I may go a little more in-depth with some of those cases. It's really to make sure we're not leaving loopholes open that could really harm someone. That's my perspective. And I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Thank you.
Okay. Did you want to make?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I thank you for all your comments. My name's Lindsay Ross. I live at 73 Mount Tom Avenue. Um, and I appreciate the process. I think that's not easy. Um, I just, I just want to give some, some thought in terms of, um, limitations on caps on number Airbnb's. Tool in my toolbox, um, for economic stability and it's, and my family has served as a creative solution. Um, originally I had, I had a short-term rental as early as 2015. So I also want to mention, they've been in East Hampton for a long time and they self-regulate very well because we are peer-reviewed. And so, I mean, I know there are, I'm not arguing against any of the, you know, health and safety and anything like that, but I just want to say that like, they've already have proof of existence, you have proof of concept. I had mine as my first one in 2015. And that one, it was a creative solution because my parents were retiring and they wanted to live here intermittently throughout the year. So my partner and I at the time had an opportunity to buy a house around the corner. And so that's how we, um, made it economically viable for them to come here part of the year. Sometimes people just turn the lever on and turn the lever off when they need a little economic help. So to turn that ability off for all, every other resident except for the first 40 that got in the door, doesn't feel very nice or fair to the other people who might need that, might have an economic change in their family and want to start renting out a room in their house because that's going to help them get through the day. Um, I, I just, I don't see a need for a cap. I think the market really helps with that and people just don't rent their units out all year. So it's, so I just want you to really consider that one. Um, in terms of the fire, um, sprinklers, I'm just curious if, if you guys have reached out to the state for guidance on that? Because I've reached out to Airbnb short-term rental owners across the state and that's not being really enforced very consistently. And the majority, it's not being enforced. So it kind of feels unfair if in East Hampton, we decide to like read it by the letter of the law when other, most communities, including like the Cape, which is one of the largest providers of short-term rentals are not enforcing that. From what I understand, zoning usually moves forward, meaning you don't like make people like, um, things that are too, you know, difficult and costly to try to retrofit. It's usually when you're doing things forward. And it seems that somewhere, short-term rentals got thrown in the bucket with boarding houses when we know they're not the same thing. Um, and the state's trying to, to figure that out. So I would hope that you would turn to the state and turn to other communities and not have unfair enforcement in our city when our Massachusetts co-residents across the state are not being subjected to that. So those are my two, my kind of, my comments today. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, again, I don't, I kind of, I'm going to respond, but, but I'm responding because it's in here.
Yeah.
Uh, and we would talk about it anyways. So because it's just happening. Um, in terms of the cap, um, uh, Counselor Smith may have a, a, another opinion about this. That's, and we can, we can talk about that. Um, I think that we are in a house of crisis right now. I think that we are seeing rents go up exponentially for some of our residents as much as 50%. Um, and I think that we are trying to continue to figure out how to make East Hampton affordable. Um, and I think to some extent, and I, I recognize that some people might disagree with this. This is, that's, that's fine. But when you have rents going up by 50 and 60%, um, then that limits who can come into the city, right? It's, it's who is financially able to come into the city. And when we take long-term housing stock away from that, there's the potential of contributing to those higher costs. Um, and the other thing with that, uh, when you have higher long-term rental costs, you have short-term rental, um, that limits people's ability and you're setting the rates that you're setting. Then the reality is, is that now we have another small body of people who are able to determine who can come into the city based on what people can pay for the space. I know that's difficult. I know it's the market. I understand all of that. But for me, for me, as a, um, it, it, representative of the city, you know, I have to take all of those particular experiences into effect or into, into account. But
well, do you? I just want to say, if you're going to cap, then I would consider separating owner-occupied versus non-owner-occupied. Because owner-occupied is not taking any housing stock off. And that, like literally, if I could not do that in my mom's house, we would have to sell tomorrow and she could no longer afford to live here. For us, this is, I'm getting a little panicked because this is our economic ability for my mother to live in the town that I live in. And if you just made a thing and I somehow missed the thing and then I didn't, it'd have to, my mom, I don't know, would have to move, to be honest. So just really consider what you're, the lever and, um, tool you're taking away from many residents if you cap it. Do you have comments?
So I'm trying to, regarding the limits that we had and that we are discussing for the 15 units and then increasing it by 10 each year and seeing it going up with the, with the market. I'm just trying to remember why we chose that particular number. Can you refresh my mind on that?
Uh, the original 50, I think it was to accommodate the ones who already have, um, their, uh, short-term rental operating. Uh, and then the 10% increase was to, uh, acknowledge that and make room for people who in the future might want to kind of make that change or
Right.
uh, provide that particular service within the community. And so it's a cap, but it also allows the city to be able to gauge what impact is this having on, um, residents, housing, neighborhoods, you know, et cetera, et cetera. And so I think that was the original intent was to, uh, for us to be able to monitor impact, so to speak.
The comment that I have is a what-if scenario that I don't know that we've really spoken. And I think my biggest concern about the caps and also by excluding people, this is the conundrum, I think that I'm feeling, is that we are currently living in almost a dual economy state wherein some, it, from a conservative level, it would say, oh, we're doing okay with the economy. And then from, um, you know, from a, a less conservative level, it'd be more of, well, wait a minute, it could, our economy could collapse within the next few months. So I just, first of all, I want to acknowledge that there's two very different ways going on in, in our entire country about the economy. And I think the, everyone who imagines this dystopian future, myself included, where our economy does collapse, what would happen then? And I just, I just want to acknowledge that, that I think that's part of what is adding to panic, that we are coming up into economic times when we're starting to see within the next year, for example, a lot of our Medicaid funds disappearing for an economically vulnerable group that will have to find other solutions available. I think we do need to put that into this conversation a bit because I do think we are entering a time where that within the next year, the existing, the existing, um, services that we have in place. So for example, the state being able to pay, um, short-term caregivers to be able to provide their caregiving. If all of those funds suddenly go away and we're left with a lot of people immediately suddenly needing to find different avenues of funds, that is a potential problem that I think we also need to counter against who's able to come into the city. Because without control, without assuming that, we could also be forcing people out of the city. So it, it is a very nuanced structure of both of those balances. And I guess, I just want to say, yeah, I'm concerned about that too. And I want to acknowledge that we don't have that written in and what happens if suddenly our economy busts and we need to come up with creative solutions. And so I do think it warrants more conversation to that level and being able to really talk about that a bit more because we haven't at that level.
Uh, I think that, um, I think it's a complicated conversation, uh, for a couple of different reasons. One, we're not a, East Hampton's not necessarily a destination.
Yeah.
And so I think we're making a bunch of assumptions that if we just open it up to anybody to do this, then one, I think that that is going to add a considerable amount of strain onto our Board of Health. And if, if, if someone is just going to do this part-time, a couple of times a month, that, that still puts weight on that particular department to have to go. And now let's say we have 100 or we have 150 and everyone's getting a permit. Well, then someone has to like go in and inspect that. And all of those various things. And, and I think they're being exceedingly generous with being open to the fifty. I just something, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not done. Um, so I think that that is a challenge. Now, if this is something that it's stone, right? The, the, the city can come back and city council can come back and review this and say, you know what, we have to accommodate all of these various things. But we don't even know if there's necessarily an incredible need for this. Um, and so I think that we've taken a first step to be able to open this up. We've tried to accommodate the people who already have them by allowing people by March thirty-first of two thousand twenty-five, if they were already operating. They can, you need to do what they were doing, right? Um, but in terms of the, well, what if I forget to do this, you know, et cetera, like that's just a part of owning a business. That you're, you're, you know, you have to do those things. Um, and so I think that we, you know, we've tried to be accommodating. We've tried to, you know, and then to the, to your comment about the fire codes and building codes and things like that. I, I can't go to the building commissioner and say, you need to stop enforcing laws, right? Like if, if, though the codes that he is following are the codes that are in the state, the fire codes, the, the building codes. All of those things are, are what are expected within the city. Now, if other cities have building commissioners who are choosing not to follow those, that's on their city, right? And I can't, I can't put that expectation on our fire department or our, our building department to say, you know what, I need you to look the other way.
So like the other day, we've gotten, we've gone directly to saying gotten different interpretations. So I just feel like as a city body, it's not out of the realm to ask for an interpretation or say, hey, this is unclear. Can, and just as like advocate, like can you just create clarity around this law? Not like, that's all.
Yeah, sure. So I think that, um, all we're saying within this is the building codes and fire codes have to be followed. So we haven't added anything else in here that says go above and beyond what is already expected by the state. So if there is an instance where you don't agree with the, in the process of getting your short-term rental approved, you know, each of those various offices have an appeal process. So if there, if you want to appeal the fire sprinkler thing, then you can appeal that. Um, I don't think that that's something that as a city council, we can say, you know, I'm sorry, I, I just, I disagree with this.
I disagree. Just clarity.
No, I'm saying I can't go to them and say, I disagree with your fire code, you know? So I think for those clarifications, I think that's just gonna have to be a part of that process. But we haven't put in here
No, I know.
Anything other than
I guess we're just speaking from a point of trauma in our interaction with the building commissioner.
Sure. I, I hear that. Um, I think that we've tried to, um, make this process a, a, a public process whereby we're working with the health department uh, to be able to, um, you know, have that be a part of that particular process. I understand that this is stressful. Uh, I understand that people have, in some instances, paid a lot of money to be able to do this. I recognize that this, this has been happening in the city for quite some time and not provided guidance or rules around this. And, you know, now we're in the situation of trying to start something, right? So I think we've provided some flexibility, uh, in terms of increasing things. I think we've tried to, again, I think we've tried to accommodate people who've already been doing this for a long time, um, so that you know, you can, you can continue to, to do what you've been doing, even though to some extent, honestly, it falls outside of what some of the other expectations are. Um, because, you know, we recognize that.
I don't know. What do you mean by some of the expectations?
Well, I think some people have been operating more than one, right? And so there's opportunity within here to continue to do what you were doing. So
I thought you meant you like personally.
No, not me personally. Yes, it's actually not gonna be going through the, the health department. It's gonna be coming to me. So I'm gonna be able to, on a case-by-case decision. I'm being facetious that it's not true. Let me just probably say that, that that is not happening. But yeah, it's, I think, I think we're trying to
No, I hear, I appreciate it. And I feel that you are. It's just, it's been stressful.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I don't think there's gonna be a rush to do it. Cause honestly, it's hard work and not everyone's up to it. No one, not everyone feels comfortable with people in their spaces and not everyone feels comfortable. It's constantly cleaning, fixing, doing, being responsible, being a good host. It's hard work.
I mean, just to, to interject a little bit, I think we are all feeling stressed. So I just told a guest who comes often that we're gonna only be allowed two units and the one you like the best, we're closing. And I got backlash for that. And I'm like, all the city, right? Like she's like, well, I don't want, I have four kids in town. And I'm like, it's, I can't do anything about it. I'm not saying you're doing it's, I'm not, I understand that you're creating. I'm just saying that becomes then my problem, right? That I have to deal with or help with.
Right, but so you're closing this. Why are you closing this?
We have three units.
Right.
And you guys are gonna allow for two.
Except if you've had these things operating
Before March twenty-third.
And have been consistently doing that without any breaks, then you can continue to do that.
Oh, no. Well, thank you.
I think that's why it's good to talk it all out. Cause you need to, yeah, I can also appreciate that. Yeah, that's pretty rough. So can you call them back?
Well, I've made actually other arrangements, um, based on what you want. It's, it's, it's a room in my house. I'm renting to a friend now. We'll see how that goes.
Yeah, but, um, I, you know, I think we tried to address that, that as, as a point of fairness.
Okay. It was my understanding that you are only gonna allow each post to, one on their property and one off of their property.
Right, but in here, if however you were operating, if you had those in operation as of March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, then you had the ability to continue to, to do that so long as you didn't have a break, you met all the requirements and you continued to do those things, right? Like we acknowledge and we recognize that some people made financial decisions based on what the city allowed you to be able to do. And so to suddenly take that away would have serious, could have serious financial implications for individuals. And so we tried to write this so that, uh, that people who were operating as they were without any guidance could continue to do that. Uh, because we feel a certain level of responsibility for the fact that we're allowed to do that. Without any kind of ordinance oversight. Right? Anything else? Anything else? So the, the biggest change in here, did you wanna say anything yet?
Uh, no, I just wanted to reiterate, um, I think it'll be really interesting this first year to see how many terms go out. We don't, we don't know what the accurate number is. And like Counselor said, I'm sure the city would reassess it if it's a huge demand. But I'd, I'm, I'm very interested to see, no one knows exactly what the number is. I'm interested to see if it was way over fifty or right around there. My name is Ryan.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you as well. I completely understand your concern.
I'm not like, obviously I love, I love it. I love the people in this room, but I just, I just come from a place of real, you just see the real stress for me. I'm a person who's like always trying to figure out a creative solution to something. Um, and so sometimes when it doesn't fit in the box of what other people expect, you feel like someone, I'm not saying you were doing this, but you feel like you're treated as like you're trying to get away with something or like, and it's like, no, I'm just trying to like be creative to like address the economic situations in my.
Sure, sure. Um, I do want to just quickly going back in regards to the, if you were operating March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, right? Those spaces still have to meet building code and, and fire code, right? So that doesn't mean that, oh, I was, you had six or seven people, like, well, that's now outside of that. So you can still have that particular kind of space, but you're just gonna be able to have six or seven or whatever. So it still has to meet code, right? So, um, great. Um, so again, I, I think the, the big pieces that we discussed last time were that it's not with the licensing board anymore. And for clarification of why that is, that may result in having to hire a, a staff member to be able to, uh, address that. Um, we have a health department, right, that already, uh, addresses, uh, housing concerns and things like that. So it was a, uh, natural, uh, fit to be able to be, uh, you know, objective in, in, uh, that human process and any concerns that might come up or to work with them to be able to, uh, both, uh, address concerns. Them to be able to, um, if there's issues or concerns that are found, to be able to work with them, to be able to kind of bring that up to, up to code. The other thing that was discussed, and I know it's a limit in terms of cap of fifty, uh, we talked about, um, a cap of two hundred and fifty days. Uh, again, I think this is a response to, um, our housing crisis and being, um, demonstrating a level of awareness around, um, that. Um, so we recognize that, um, there is a service that is being provided, uh, within the city. Um, some people are not going to be able to have more than, uh, more than fifty percent of the year to be able to do that because they don't meet, um, fire code in terms of sprinklers, et cetera. Um, so, uh, to accommodate, uh, the need for kind of short-term rental for those folks who do have sprinklers and things like that. Then there's the opportunity to be able to have, uh, that cap be raised to two hundred and fifty. Um, but when people are looking for that approval, uh, um, they're either going to be able to do the two hundred and fifty if they have a sprinkler system set up, if that's what is followed by code, uh, or they would have less than, uh, fifty percent of the year. Um, and that's just the determination that, that would be made when the application is made.
Hundred, the half of the year, I don't know where that came from.
Yep. So there is an, of, of fire code and building code, um, that essentially they are, if it's over, it's, it's one, um, um, what's the word I'm looking for? Yes, it's a, it's a day less, but i- i- it's kind of a ranking, so to speak, that if you have a fire sprinkler system and you meet all those various codes and things like that, then you're able to do more than half the year. Um, and then if you don't meet those particular criteria, then you would be fifty percent minus one day. And so, um, that's, um, yeah. So we're not stipulating and saying we're only doing half because there's some people who might have sprinkler systems that allows them to be able to go above and beyond that, right? So that determination is gonna have to be made on the application when you're doing that, right? And you have those various inspections, right?
Where do we have the opportunity to give a sign up in the moment, whether you have it or not? We've never had opportunity to appeal that decision to the state. Cause I am feeling we're gonna have a mass appeal to the state to force them to address this issue. So like, if we have to declare that before we can even sign up, when's our opportunity to appeal it?
I think after you sign up, if it's, you are told that doesn't work, or you can't do that, then, uh, when you're given that particular, um, report from the city of that standing, I believe that there is something within that that will tell you what the appeal process is. And then you would go forward and appeal that. Other questions? Again, I, I recognize that this is, this is not what people want to hear, but we don't write state fire code and, and things like that. So I think we've, we've left this general enough that, you know, those things have to be, uh, to meet code and building code and fire code and health code, you know, et cetera. Um, so here we are with that, right? So two hundred and fifty, uh, days per registered year. Um, anything, anything else that's of concern that we need to talk about? Um, and, uh, Allison, do you have anything that you want to add? Um, I know you've been here listening in, but is there anything else that, that you would like to add?
Um, I just wanna call out the, uh, addition of language around, um, folks who are on septic. Uh, Ryan, you might wanna review this and I, I can send it to you after the meeting too. Um, just to make sure it covers your concerns. But what I wrote in is that uh, if a short-term rental is connected to a private sewer, the Board of Health may, as a condition of registration, impose a restriction on the number of occupants permitted on the premises at any one time. Um, so if you want any tweaks to that language, um, let me know. The other, um, the other point I wanted to bring up was about the thirty days to cure. I know that I had said that in the last, um, ordinance committee meeting and then in talking it through.
Allison, hang on a second. Can you wait a minute?
Sure.
Um, what were you just saying? What did you have a? When you were just talking about, um, what was it referring to? Where is this in the, in the language, in the, in the document?
It is forty dash fifty point four G.
Thank you.
And it's in, in this, it's in blue.
For clarification, Ryan, is that, um, says that the Board of Health may impose a restriction. We had talked about the restriction being five people. Am I remembering that right?
I think the restriction was based on number of rooms.
Number of bedrooms, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So if you go and you look at F, which is just above what I had added, um, we already had a note about the number of bedrooms offered can't exceed what's permitted by the sanitary code. Um, my, I know we, we went a little bit back and forth on like, well, what if it's a very, very large bedroom and you have six people in it? For example, um, that's probably not.
Um, that's probably not going to meet the intent of the law as it pertains to septic system restrictions. So I, I thought giving the Board of Health the latitude to determine what is appropriate based upon the type of septic system or how it's sized might be better. Um, but again, I'm, I mean, I'm open to amending that as, as appropriate.
Ryan, do you have thoughts about that?
Yeah, um, I'll definitely shoot you an email and follow up. The big thing that I would want is something in there as far as, um, once every three years, a house that is, that uses septic system would have to send in some type of, uh, would have to have some type of inspection done to ensure that their septic system is in compliance.
Is that something that already happens?
As far as what?
Any other housing that you do?
No, it would only be if someone was to sell it or, um,
Oh, I see.
Something like that. It would be just to ensure that if they, all, all these people are doing the short-term rental, that it isn't causing a septic issue.
Would you just have proof that they've had the system pumped like every two or three years? Because opening it up and getting inspected is costly to people.
No, I, I, I think that's more, that's more than acceptable, um, some type of pumping record or something as a part of the application. Just to ensure that it's being maintained regularly.
Yeah, so I would be looking for some help with, um, how that should be worded in the actual regulation.
I, I think that was the, the other, the only other point that we had discussed. Everything else is, has remained largely the same.
Well, I did just wanna make one comment about the thirty days to cure. I know that came up, um, at the last meeting and there was talk of adding something specific in here. Um, I am reluctant to do that because there are different types of violations that are going to be found. And some are going to be more urgent, um, or potentially dangerous situations than others. Um, you know, a ripped or missing screen is, is different than, um, a non-functioning smoke detector, for example. So I, I think it makes more sense to leave the, um, period for which violations need to be corrected up to the inspecting authority, um, who is going to be going off of their own codes and, and you know, time periods within those codes anyways. I, I don't think, um, prescribing a number of days in this ordinance is, is the best, um, is the best thing to do.
Yeah, you had talked about that.
That actually, that makes a lot of sense, um, because the way we do it now per the state sanitary code is usually for minor stuff like, um, a screen or something like that. We give them thirty days, but then there's a set list of conditions deemed to endanger, like a missing smoke and CO, no heat, something like that, which has twenty-four hours to be addressed. So I, I would feel much more comfortable with that.
So do we need to say in here then, or does it say, I'm looking back again for violations? Does it say that it would follow? Um.
It, it doesn't. I mean, whatever violation is found is going to be cited under the code where the violation is based from. Um, and, and that will specify, you know, an appeal process, the time to cure, all, all of that. So I, I, I don't think we can account for each of those individual codes and, and their time periods and appeal processes in here directly. Um, we do have an appeal process in here for violations of this ordinance. Um, but again, most things are gonna also fall within a respective state code.
Right. Counselor Smith, do you have questions about that?
I'm sorry, he's catching up on the notice that we have an appeal process for the ordinance, but most will fall under the respective state codes. And I remember talking about that last time, so I don't really have any questions about it.
I, I think that that sounds reasonable and I think we don't wanna chop anything rich in. The ordinance that would contradict, so to speak, kind of those, how to cure those violations and things like that. So that, that makes sense to me. Um, any comment from, I just wanna make sure that you all feel like that here.
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds reasonable.
Okay.
I know you've, I've seen that in laws and, oh, that's not a good thing. Defer to the law that's already.
Yep. Great. Any other comment questions about, about this? Counselor Smith. I would like to, uh, present this to counsel at the next meeting. Um, uh, Counselor Smith, do we, I'm drawing a blank, because I'm thinking about zoning right now and this is not in zoning. Do we need to have a public hearing? We have to have a public hearing for, yeah, so that's a public hearing, not just zoning.
Yeah.
I was just reading the caption.
Oh, yep, so, so at the next meeting, I will, uh, share this with counsel. Um, I will wait for any communication from Allison and Ryan regarding septic and how they want that to be. And then at the next meeting, I will set a public hearing. Um, and then this will likely invite anyone who now sees this in the agenda to come and to kind of give their, um, opinion about this. Um, yeah, any thoughts about that?
Were you going to try and time the public hearing for the general ordinance with the public hearing for the zoning ordinance?
Oh, I forgot about the zoning ordinance. Um, do you know when that's gonna be? Has it got, when's the next planning board or?
So it has to, um, because of the public hearing notice requirements, uh, it won't be heard by the planning board until September, um, sorry, sixteenth.
Okay, uh, is that the, but that's not the joint hearing, correct?
Oh, I forgot that you all do joint hearings. Um, it could be, I guess, I'm not sure on the process, how that normally goes, if there's a separate planning board hearing and then also a joint hearing, I, that maybe we talk offline about that.
Okay, all right, so we can talk about that. So at the next city council meeting, I will provide some update of when that public hearing will take place and hopefully, um, uh, yeah, so that's, that's where we are with that, like, I'll have to, to have that conversation. But it will not be at the next city council meeting, um, so we'll, we'll figure that out. I know we do have that October managed deadline, um, so we will, uh, work to make that. Um, I will update you all with even on kind of when that will, will take place. Any other questions or anything else? Okay, so, um, if there's nothing else, then I will entertain, um, option to adjourn. Um, seconds, all in favor?
Bye.